Click on the Participants tab if you're joined via Zoom that becomes visible when the mouse cursor is at the bottom of the window. Click on the blue Raise Hand button on the bottom of the Participants menu. This should bring the blue raised hand icon to show next to your name in the Participants menu. For those joining on a desktop or laptop computer, there are keyboard shortcuts you can use to raise your hand. On a Windows computer, it's Alt and Y together, and on a Mac computer, it's Option and Y together. If you're using an Android or iPhone operating system, then you will need to navigate to the three dots on the bottom right of the Zoom Meeting Room screen. Click on the three dots and then you will be able to raise your hand. You'll see it on the second thing in the list, right below Disconnect Audio, when your item of interest that you would like to speak on is announced by the Planning Commission chair. And tablets will have a similar screen as a smartphone Zoom app. Once your hand is raised, you will be placed on a list in order of all individuals according to the time hands were raised. Remote users should please wait until your name is called by the chair, and you will be unmuted to speak on the current item. You will be required to provide your full name and mailing address for the meeting record. Thank you for your patience, and please wait for the meeting to start momentarily.
You want me to start the roll call vote?
Yeah, if you want to start.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote for commissioners first to make sure we have a quorum. Barth?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Can now. Morehauser?
Here.
Odie? Ralston?
President.
Randall?
Here.
Vanderflit?
Here.
Duffy, here. Good evening, I call to order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and I'm going to begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone in the meeting room tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be recorded live and available for viewing by members of the public afterwards on the www.minhahacounty.org site. In observance of the CDC guidelines for social distancing, tonight's meeting is taking place simultaneously within the county commission meeting room and virtually within a Zoom meeting room online. In the Zoom meeting room, each individual user on the line will be on mute to maintain communication clarity for everyone. Every item listed on the agenda will be read separately. If any member of the public wishes to be heard on an item, you may raise your hand while I read the item description. If hands are raised, we will follow our normal hearing procedure by requesting planning staff to present a report on each item, and then request the petitioner to come to the podium and make a statement or answer any questions. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the item shall be recognized by the planning staff in the order of the hands that were raised and state their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission will then discuss the matter and take appropriate action. For those participating remotely, please watch the following instructions on how to raise your hands in the Zoom program. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Please either raise your hand. If you are attending remotely, you will be on muted to comment.
No hands are raised.
Okay, so we'll move on. Item number one on the agenda is the minutes from the April 27 Planning Commission meeting. Is there any comments or changes to the minutes? I will entertain a motion, and if you do make the motion, please state who you are, please.
Adam Morehauser. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the April 27 meeting.
Second, Jeff Barth.
Our motions are made and seconded to approve the minutes of the April 27 meeting. This will be another roll call vote. Barth?
Aye.
Morehauser?
Aye.
Odie?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Vanderflit?
Aye.
And Duffy, aye. Thank you. Items number two and four are conditional use permits, and item number three is a rezoning application. Any final action taken on the conditional use permits tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Tuesday, May 26 at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, June 23, 2020, at or after 9:00 a.m. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. Any action taken on the rezoning application will be forwarded to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, June 23, 2020, at or after 9:00 a.m. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. Next, I will read the description of item number two. If anyone wishes to comment on item two, now would be the time to raise your hand. Item number two is conditional use permit 20-16 to amend conditional use permit 13-15 to allow private campground of up to eight camping units on the property legally described as tract 1, Bor Edition, North Half, Section 27, Township 102 North, Range 52 West. The petitioner is Hunter's Point Shooting Complex. They are also the property owner, located approximately 2.5 miles south of Humboldt.
No hands are raised.
Is the petitioner here?
Yes ma'am.
Will you please come forward and state your name and address, please?
Isaac Chamnis, 3908 South Surtoma, Sioux Falls.
Are there any questions for the petitioner?
I'm Charles, can I get in the meeting?
He's my neighbor to the east.
I think Mr. Luth was trying to raise his hand earlier and was having a difficulty coming off mute.
Yep.
David, do you know what's going on?
I don't know how he got off mute, but I think he wants to speak on the item.
Who is that?
Charles Luth.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you?
Can I comment now?
You can. Please state your name and address, sir.
My name is Charles Luth, I live, my address is Fort 5833, 260th Humboldt. I live, I'm right next to Hunter's Point there. And I guess my main concern is I have so much trouble up here with traffic. I have a driveway that goes to the west, it comes off 459, and when anybody presses Maps, it shows how to get to Hunter's Point through my driveway. And I don't know how to stop it. You know, it's private driveway. And I get, on the weekends, when he's real busy, 5:10, you know, five to 10 cars a day drive through my driveway. And it's been a problem, and it's gotten worse since he's put in the rifle range and the pistol, and next thing you want to have campers driving through it. And I have no idea what to do about it. He knows about it, he's tried, he's got signs up there, not, you know, tried to tell people, but they ignore it. And, you know, I stop them. If I stop somebody, they got their phone in their hand, "Oh, I read the sign, but my, you know, the Maps tell me to go this way," you know? And so, you know, what do you do? I guess that's my main concern. And then I also have a concern with the township. The traffic that's on that gravel road is terrible. I mean, you know, it's cost the township a lot of money to keep that road up so he can get people in there. And it's just things you have to consider. I guess that's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
David, was that the only one? Do you know?
That's the only hand raised.
Sir, you're apparently aware of what this gentleman is referring to?
I don't want to get in a mudslinging contest with my neighbor.
Okay.
But the township and him closed that road. He's actually half, three-quarter mile east of my east property line. They closed that road with the township, so the township doesn't have to maintain it. But Google Maps still has, he's never got it fixed with Google. It's not my property, I can't control Google, and it's Google Maps that brings you through that road. He told you that I've marked it, no right turn out of my gate, but a half mile to the east is my property line, which he picks up. And these guys follow Google Maps in and out, and all I can tell them is, "Don't go that way." And once they get out there, I can't stop the traffic. And it's not as bad as indicated, but we get, the road's been underwater for two years as this township issue. It just came out two weeks ago, three weeks ago. So hopefully we get to use it again this year, but really hasn't been an option for the last two, two and a half years with the water.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Jeff, did you have a comment?
Yeah, you know, he said that the township closed their road. The road is not closed. It's a dead end because of the interstate. It is not a closed road. It's closed from my driveway through. And yeah, the road's been underwater for two years, but now it's finally off, so now people are going to start driving through again. So that's all I get to say. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments from the commissioners?
Jeff, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Madam Chair, I can't hear anything. Is somebody saying something?
Yes, I thought you had a comment to make.
I do, if it's my turn.
It is your turn.
Okay, this is Jeff. So right now, we already have this traffic, and now they're going to be driving campers in. Do they turn around in your yard and stuff to get out after they get to the dead end? Mr. Luth?
Oh, yeah. They pull right up in the yard, well, they can go right through. I have two driveways. I have, my house sits in the middle, I got three-quarters of a mile to the west, and I got three-quarters of a mile to the east. They come in from the east, they'll go, if they want to turn around, they got to come up in my yard with the camper, because he can't turn on the road. Narrow driveway.
Sir, is your driveway really long and parallel to the interstate?
Yes.
Okay, I've been on your driveway.
Yeah, okay. I figured some commissioners maybe probably have come that way from Sioux Falls. How the directions tell you to come.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, this is Randall, I have a question.
Go ahead, Becky.
Mr. Luth, what would you see as a potential way to stop, to stop this? I mean, it sounds like there's been signs posted, and they don't abide by the signs. I mean, do you have any suggestions about how this could be remedied?
Well, I, I, the only thing I can think of is, you know, I'd have to put up a gate, you know? I'd have to gate the driveway, which is an inconvenience for me. You know, it's, it's the only way you're going to stop it.
Any further questions?
Madam Chair, it's Jeff again.
Go ahead.
When I was on Mr. Luth's driveway, I was lost.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Madam Chair?
Yes, who's speaking?
Madam Chair, do you hear me? This is Doug.
There he is.
Hello, Doug. I hear you.
Okay, I, okay. Is this a 365-day event center or a shooting range that open 365 days? What is the season of this?
Pretty well annual. We're going year-round now.
Did you hear that, Doug?
Yes. What happened with all snow removal on that, then?
Most, 99% of our traffic comes in from the west off of Highway 19. Like I said, the snow removal on that, the township made a few, it's just been underwater for two years, so it's just, we've closed it. I've had to pull more people out of the water in the last few months than we have in the last couple of years. So all the traffic for the last two years has all been westbound out of my gate, with everything eastbound just absolutely impossible to pass. So there's been no maintenance on that road for two years. We just haven't had to deal with it since 2018, 2017.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, may I ask a question? David, can you pan that back out to sort of the section line? You have my quarter and whole section.
I could not hear the comment.
I wanted to pan out the section video. Hunter's Point sits in the middle of 60 acres of my 560 acres that we own. This road from the east or the right side of the red square, can I walk up to the map or do I need to stay here? The picture, the diagram that says 260th Street to the east, right there, that has literally been underwater for two and a half years. My gate to my facility is just about right there, and I have a posted sign that we paid for that says, "No right turn." The problem with any traffic coming down that road three years ago is the fact that when they closed that road and made it a private drive, Google Maps has it as a township road, and it brings them right, right through there. Mr. Luth, the fix is to get into Google and get that road off the Google Maps. Have it listed as a, it's not even a minimum maintenance or a, we got a dead end sign way west of me that says it comes in and stops. I've posted it, I've done everything with the traffic. But all the camper traffic or what, you know, we do a few expanded shoots. We do the Bench Rest National shoot in August. We do Fioke National Clay Shotgun Championship. These guys are coming in for three or four days, and they just shoot, and they get back in, and then they leave. So this was really just an extended service for the guys that come in compact that didn't want to go back into Sioux Falls with guns and everything else, they'd just stay on the But the, the traffic part, I can't fix Google, and I don't own the land, so they won't talk to us anyway. It really just hadn't been an issue since 2017, because it's low plains, and it floods, and the drain tiles couldn't keep up with the water.
Madam Chair, it's Jeff.
Jeff, go ahead.
Can we ask staff to, if they have any idea on what to do with Google Maps?
Do you have any comment?
Unfortunately, I don't have any, I don't know how we can fix Google Maps. I mean, there must be some kind of mechanism that we can send an inquiry in. It's something that we can look into. So, I mean, I can ask our GIS people to see what we can do to get that, that situation maybe addressed through Google, but I can't promise anything.
Did you hear that, Jeff?
Yes, I did. I just know that getting off the interstate, that's the way you sort of feel like you should go, and that's the way people are coming, I'm sure. So if you had shooters coming from Brandon or Rochester, Minnesota, they'd get off the interstate and then take that driveway.
There's no, there's no access from the interstate to the road that comes on the east side of Charles Luth's place. The only interstate access coming off of 90, either east or west, would be at Humboldt, exit 379. And that's a mile and a half west, and has nothing to do from the east.
Can I comment?
Who's speaking?
Charles.
This is Charles Luth.
Okay, do you have something to say, sir?
Yeah, he was saying there's no, the only access. If you go to Maps and you're coming from the east, it tells you to get off at Hartford exit, and then it brings you right to my driveway. So that's why the people come that way. You know, he's saying the only access is at Humboldt. There are people that are getting off at Hartford and then coming this way.
Ma'am, Hartford's eight miles, 10 miles east of us.
I've tried to call Google, and they just, you know, they just kind of laugh at you. So that's a problem, I have no idea how to fix. So I tried.
Yeah, we were going to make it.
Google Maps I can't fix. I've done everything I can posting, so I just, and well, it seems to be an excitable offense here. It's, like I said, for the last three years, it's been non-existent.
Commissioners, do you have any further comments?
Chair, this is Jeff. I really don't like the idea of unleashing camping vehicles, RVs, into Mr. Luth's yard. I would like us to look into seeing what might be done to, to stop that traffic from going that way, perhaps to have the township put up some additional signage, or perhaps have Hunter's Point put up some signage, but the idea of having RVs turning around in my yard is not a happy one for me.
Are you making a motion, Jeff?
Not yet. I was hoping to hear some other discussion.
Is there any further discussion, commissioners?
Madam Chair, I would agree with Jeff on that. I don't think we should make a bigger problem, I guess, until we address the traffic issue.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, this is Doug.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what the other two commissioners have said. I totally agree, and then with RVs coming, I can't see it getting any better, only worse, and who knows what might end up happening when they all start coming in.
This is Randall, and I agree with the other, what the other commissioners have stated. I mean, I imagine as a last resort would be to put a condition on here for some kind of a gate at the end of, to prevent traffic from going up Mr. Luth's driveway, but that's certainly an inconvenience then for, for Mr. Luth. So it seems to me there must be some better way to get them to stop, get the, the Google Maps to stop sending people to his yard.
Anyone else up for a comment?
Madam Chair, it's Jeff again. I, I'd like to make a motion to defer action for a month and look into what we can do with Google Maps, or with the township, or with our own county highway department to stop that traffic from going down that, that private drive. I'm not opposed to the project, it's just that it's inconveniently situated with the neighbor here.
Madam Chair, this is Doug Odie. I'd second that.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to defer conditional use permit 20-16. Roll call vote. Barth?
Madam Chair. Further comment on the motion?
Sorry, is there any more discussion?
On the motion.
Okay, roll call vote. Barth?
Aye.
Morehauser?
Aye.
Odie?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Vanderflit?
Aye.
Duffy, aye. Motion's been approved to defer till next month. Item number three, rezoning, 20-02 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. Property legally described as tract 3, wool tracks, except H1, which is in parentheses, northwest corridor, northwest corridor, Section 27, Township 103 North in Range 49 West. Petitioner is Midway Service Incorporated. Property owner is Bruce Ballin. It is located approximately 4.5 miles south of Baltic. Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Will you please come forward and state your name and address?
My name is Todd Ibis at 1600 West Wicklow in Sioux Falls. I'm the controller for the company.
Is there any questions for the petitioner? David, is there anything out there?
I'm checking on Jeff Barth. Is there...
Do I have my hand up still or something?
Oh, we're wondering if you have a comment or you want to ask the petitioner any questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Not yet anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak to this item?
No hands are raised.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, this is Mike Ralston.
Go ahead.
Looking at where it's at, uh, in correlation to, you know, Raven Industries and the other businesses, uh, that are in close proximity to the zoning, rezoning request, makes sense to me to approve this item. So I guess with that said, I'll make a motion to approve.
I second. Randall?
Thank you. Uh, motions are made and seconded to approve rezoning dash 2002. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Barth?
Aye.
Morehauser?
Aye.
Odie?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Vanderflit?
Aye.
And Duffy, aye. That item has been approved. Move on to item number four. Conditional use permit, 20-14 to allow agriculturally-related operations, welding, livestock equipment, and welding repair on farm machinery on the property legally described as tract 1A, Swenson's Trax, in addition, Northwest Quarter, Section 35, Township 104 North, Range 48 West. Uh, that is D&amp;S Welding, uh, looks like Coley Shellum. The property owners are Mark and Jennifer Shellum, located 4.5 miles west of Sherman. Kevin, you want to comment on this one?
Yeah. Uh, Kevin Huckman, County Planning Department. Uh, I'll just begin with, uh, that staff is recommending more or less a partial approval of what the petitioner has agreed to. And I'll begin with there. The petitioner is requesting, uh, to have his welding shop at his location with an expanded building, the 180 by 150 building there. And staff is recommending that he's allowed to have the operation to exist in his current footprint and not with the expansion. Um, and I can go through the whole staff report if the, the planning commission wants me to. The petitioner is here tonight.
Does anyone want Kevin to go through his report? If not, is the petitioner here? Pardon me?
Are we waiting for the petitioner to say something?
Uh, he'll come to the podium here. He's up next. Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward and state your name and address, sir?
Cody Shellum, 48227, 249th Street, Sherman.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for him?
Madam Chair, it's Jeff again. Mr. Shellum, so do you understand the concerns that the, uh, planning department had about your existing operation?
Uh, no, I do not.
Well, as I read it here, it looks like you're, uh, operating, uh, without the proper permit. Is that correct? I would ask the staff to answer that question.
All right, why don't I go through the staff report then?
Go ahead.
Since there's questions about it. I left my clicker again. The property is located approximately four and a half miles west of Sherman. Uh, it is the last residential property on 249th Street, which dead-ends right before West Pipestone Creek. Uh, the petitioner is operating a welding shop uh, out of his current location, um, in the current shed. The petitioner has submitted a narrative and a site plan. And the narrative does describe the basics of the operation, uh, but does not necessarily include, uh, any comments about how many employees or customers or trucks that are involved in the operation itself, which is important for a, uh, business that's located along gravel road. Uh, the site plans that the petitioner submitted includes existing operations, plus shows places where outdoor storage and parking and, um, maneuvering spaces. So here's the existing situations, uh, along with, uh, the proposed new building, the 80 by 150-foot building, or 1,200 square feet. Uh, staff will note that this size of a building, or 12,000 square feet, excuse me, that this size of the building is typically reserved for industrial zoned areas. It would be, uh, it's typically inappropriate, or... It is inappropriate for industrial use this large in an agricultural zone district. Uh, but it should, should allow to expand into an industrial zone district later. Staff will note that the property is well secluded though, that there are lots of trees planted around it, including newer planted trees to the west side of the property. Uh, the conditional use permit criteria that's evaluated for every conditional use permit, and I'll go through these six criteria. The effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. The subject property is located in an active agricultural area, but as, however, it is also at the dead end of a township road that's nearly two miles away from the nearest paved highway. Uh, the seclusion of the property does distance it from the neighbors and other uses, but the gravel road will, uh, and the increased use will increase traffic along the gravel road. Uh, number two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant properties for uses prob in the area. Uh, this area is, uh, to remain agriculture for the foreseeable future. Uh, allowing this type of industrial welding requests may lead to future requests of similar uses, uh, throughout the county. Uh, this is also possible that any residential building eligibility in the area may become less desirable in proximity to a welding operation. Number three, the uses and access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. As stated earlier, there's two miles of township gravel roads. Uh, staff has spoken with the chairman of Logan Township. And to update the staff report a little bit, the township chairman has noted that he does have an agreement with the petitioner uh, regarding the road situation moving forward. And if we want, we can include that as part of the conditions that we have a written agreement. Number four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The property is large enough and the plans show loading and unloading zones. Number five, that the measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, and inclusive of light of signs, so none of these will constitute a nuisance. This isn't a... The operation is planned to primarily take place in a closed building and much of the property is surrounded by tree grove. Uh, these woods allow for some screening of the loading, unloading areas and lighting. Uh, that being said, lighting should be directed downward and fully cut off and outdoor storage should be limited on the site. Number six, health, safety, general welfare in the public and the comprehensive plan. Uh, agriculturally-related operations are allowed in the A1 Agricultural Zoning District uh, if the operation involves handling, storage, and shipping of farm products. There is no doubt that welding manufacturing supports agriculture, but it may be used to manufacture general goods depending on market demands. It may be possible and prudent to allow small operations on a rural site to allow for new company to begin while limiting potential negative consequences through conditions. But staff finds it is not appropriate to allow the business to expand to an industrial size. Staff reviews the major home occupation section of the ordinance to, uh, find ways to allow the operation with limitations in the agricultural district. If the petitioner does not accept the limits or grows beyond the limits, then staff finds it would be prudent for the petitioner to find his business, to locate his business in an industrial zoned area of a rural service area or in a municipality. Uh, with that, uh, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with eight conditions. The condition number one, the agriculturally-related operation shall be secondary to the property being a residential site. If the dwelling is unoccupied by the petitioner or operator of the agriculturally-related operation, then the agricultural operation shall cease. The agriculturally-related operat, number two, the agriculturally-related operation shall be limited to the existing 56-feet-by-96-feet building as depicted on the site plan. Number three, the occupation shall have no more than five employees, including residents of the property. Number four, all outside storage of the equipment and display shall be limited to completed products which are ready for sale and shall be located within the center yard surrounded by trees. Number five, all new and replacement outdoor lighting shall be directed downward and fully shielded and cut off to prevent spillage of light onto other properties. Number six, signage shall be limited by Article 16 of the 1990 Revised Zoning Ordinance of Minnea County. Number seven, the occupation shall not generate more than 10 visits per day from clients or customers average over a period of seven consecutive days. Number eight, the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the site at any time after proper notice of the owner to ensure that the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval of Minnea County's zoning ordinance. Uh, and that is all the conditions. Is there any questions?
Madam Chair, say Kevin, is this unoccupied right now then? Is there a home on it then or not?
Yes, there's a home on it and, uh, it's kind of covered by that blue dot on the screen right now.
Is it down in the left-hand corner? Is that where it's at or...
Um, well, for those of you who are in the room, I do have a clicker I can point to.
Okay, I see it there now.
The blue dot.
Okay, now I see it. Better on this one here. Yep, I see it now.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. I think that on balance with the conditions that were outlined, that this project could work. And so I guess, uh, I'd like to hear what others have to say, but I would probably be in support of it.
Madam Chair, could you please inquire of the audience whether there's anybody in the public that wishes to be heard on this and also whether it's on Zoom?
Is there any other person that would like to speak on this item?
Oh, Madam Chair, this is me again. I guess without others making any comment, I'll make a motion to approve this with the conditions that Kevin outlined.
Madam Chairs, Ryan, I would second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve conditional use permit 20-14. Any further discussion?
No hands are raised in the Zoom meeting room.
Another roll call vote. Barth?
Aye.
Morehauser?
Aye.
Odie?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Vanderflit?
Aye.
Aye. Conditional use permit 20-14 has been approved. Item number five, old business. Number six, new business. Okay, I'll adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Barth?
Aye.
Morehauser?
Aye.
Odie?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Vanderflit?
Aye.
Duffy, aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone.